Really significant institutional memory leaving our organization, also choosing to change our attorney at this time.
I totally agree, Andrew. And also, I want to acknowledge, as long as I've been on this committee, which is quite a while, I have worked with John, who has been incredibly informative, helpful, and everything else. And I believe his track record speaks for itself. I have absolutely no problem renewing this and voting for this contract. I think we're lucky to have him.
You got let go recently, right? From the school system?
That's not pursuant to this discussion.
John, I'm sorry, can you come to the microphone just so we've got a record of it? Thank you. Knowing, of course, you don't have to answer this because this is about your contract.
Oh, no, I'm happy to answer the question because we had the discussion in that district in public session. And school committees have become very, very political in the last few years. And it has become a revolving door in some districts as to who the school department's attorney. Exodus West Greenwich has been a revolving door. Warwick is a revolving door. Pawtucket is a revolving door. Gloucester Gloucester is a revolving door. School districts all over the state are becoming more and more a revolving door. I'm very proud of the work that I have done for Charahoe. I'm very proud of the work that I have done for all of the districts that I have worked for.
I have a comment. I've been able to work with John for several years and happy to support his contract renewal. One, I've never known John to steer us astray. Two, John and I have disagreed at times, and we've never had a personal disagreement. And I think that speaks to the respect that John and I show one another. Number three, we just saw that he was awarded a top lawyer by his peers, which we had nothing to do with. If you talk about John Anderson in educational circles, whether people like him or not, they respect the job that John does for his districts. And finally, to be pointed about it, John Anderson saw the trouble that was coming that we had recently, that was decided by the Supreme Court, and John was right. So I'm very comfortable voting for this contract, and I do not want to bargain hood for legal opinions. And then Donna.
Yeah, I don't think this is a question about John. I think more of a question about the language in this new contract as opposed to his previous contract.
Donna.
The more I sit in these meetings with our, and this is, I've got to be very careful how I put this, there seems to be an apparent sidebar conversations going on that I really worry about open meeting violations.
Point of order.
And a lot of times, so you've got to keep it.
Point of order, please.
Excuse me, who's saying point of order?
Me, I said that.
Okay. Okay, I want to keep it simple, okay? Apparently, there was information about John's contract on Facebook. I heard it. I don't do Facebook. Please be careful not to violate the open meetings violation. It's very important to stick and limit the conversations outside of this meeting. Thank you.
Are there comments? Jess?
So regarding the language on this contract versus the last one, I looked at the last one, the one that expired earlier this summer, and there was another case on there that I essentially had a cap, like Tyler's asking for a cap, but it seems to me that essentially these cases have met their cap already, and that's why there's an extra, an hourly fee charged. Is that correct, my understanding that? Correctly, maybe John can answer that more, like why these cases are called out specifically?
Not exactly. What happens is from time to time, there are cases that are out of the, out of the ordinary type of work. The vast majority of what I do for the school department is as the superintendent described. I get a call from superintendent, I get a call from Ms. Spott, I get a call from Mr. Draper, I get asked by Mr. Camilla to review a contract. I probably talk to people in this district four or five times a day, and that's the vast majority of work that I do. Every so often, there are matters that come before the school committee that are of a more complicated, unusual nature. The case that is described in the agreement that I presented to you falls in that category. In addition to that, labor negotiations fall into that category if they have become protracted. Now, the irony of that is, is that you have contracts with both of your unions, so there will be zero funds as a result of that. It's really a function of the nature of the case. The case that was removed is because that case has run its course, it's over, it's been resolved, it's been resolved. And this is the practice that I have used, I don't know, going back seven, you know, seven or eight years with the district. I do want to say that the system is, as Mr. Wade indicated, something that you can self-monitor. You will have later on this agenda, a consent agenda that has bills on the consent agenda. If you have a question, you should feel free to ask. If you have a question, you can contact Mr. Draper or the superintendent ahead of time and ask, and ask the question.
Thank you. I just have a clarifying question. Not for you, John, but line 5080 on our budget, which would probably break you up, there was a total expenditure of $86,000 for attorney's fees. Is that over and above the monthly retainer fee? Or is that the retainer fee is in that line item? And then additional chart, things that were charged were, so it's all one line item?
So...
Does that make sense?
Yeah, so in the budget, you're going to, you're going to see it on one line item.
Yep.
On the budget.
Yep.
We do look at the bills and then determine if they're part of the retainer, if you will, fee payment, or if it's outside. I can say budget over the last three years is consistent with the budget. The only time we got close to budget is when we had both contracts in the same time. The case that John just mentioned, not the, not the ones in contract here, the ones that were recently resolved, did not have, yeah, did not have significant costs. They kind of lingered on for a while.
I'm afraid this one, though. That's just me, though. That's my opinion.
Understood. I would, I would say, in my opinion, from similar arrangements that I've seen in the past, based on our experience here for the last three years, our labor negotiations, I think, approached the $10,000 range. That was for two contracts that were protracted, so, you know, I think, based on the activity I've seen on that other case, I don't, I don't know that $100 right away. I can't, I can't say.
Well, that's true. Well, my, really, my question was, there was, it was just the amount that I had tallied for a year, and I don't know if you want to discuss numbers, but it might clarify, it was about $70,000 per year, plus an additional 62.5 cents per mile per the IRS rate of 2022. And then there's the line item 5080 on the budget, which is 86,000. Is that, if you subtracted, is that $16,000 more than...
Oh, no.
Yeah, I think that's the litigation stuff that we have to hold in case of, for the auditors. I think that's what Polly's talking about.
Yeah, that's different. So, so that goes, yeah, those litigation commitments are money that we will likely put other parties.
Okay, so that's what that means in the 5080 line item on budget? I wrote it right down, line 50.
No, no, from the operating budget, no, the operating budget is the legal cost, the analysis we have done, we show, which is, we consistently come in under budget.
And I guess the only other conflict I would have, because Mr. Anderson represents so many other school districts and schools in the state, every time we have an issue with one of those schools, we have to get outside legal representation because there's conflict of interest if he represents, am I correct, if that's how it was described to us before?
We haven't had that, I mean, since I've been here.
Yeah.
We haven't had that concern, but, I mean, I know John represents Coventry and...
Yeah.
One, what, that I can recall one time in 15, 15 years.
Well, it's a concern that we also should be looking at, that if you have a conflict with Coventry, we have to get an outside legal, we can't use you because you represent Coventry and Charahoe.
And in that circumstance, I can't represent Coventry, I...
Yeah.
Which is, which means that you would be paying for the service regardless.
Oh, I'm not worried about Coventry.
Well, I know that you're not worrying about that. I know, I know that you're not worrying about paying for the service because you'd have to pay another attorney to do that. That issue has come up once in 15 years.
Sorry. Did the trust cover that?
The trust did not. It was a tuition dispute as to who was responsible for paying the tuition of a student from Coventry who came to Charahoe Tech. I think it was that way, the way that it went. And I should remind the school committee that the school committee has, haven't had to use it in an awful long time, but you have backup counsel that you have already selected as a committee, that's attorney Jeff Sowa. And if there is an instance where I have a conflict, Mr. Sowa steps in, one time I can think of. Mr. Sowa also, though, represents the school committee. For example, in certain student and all teacher discipline cases, he advises the committee, I'm the superintendent's lawyer for the purpose of those hearings. Having conflict counsel is very common. I am actually conflicts counsel for the Rhode Island Board of Elections, and one of the reasons I'm wearing a suit today is because I had to fill in as conflicts counsel for the first time this year at the Board of Elections.
Yeah, John, one, one, just one question for you. Are we paying just you or are we paying the firm?
This contract is with the firm. It's not, it's not a contract with me. So, for example, if you call the, if the superintendent, I'm going to give a very specific example. One day, some agents came to Donna's desk with a warrant involving, they wanted certain records involving fraud in federal, fraud in the federal lunch program. I happened to be at a funeral, and I was sitting in a capped church, and I was not in a position to speak to Donna in the middle of the church, but I could text Donna, call so-and-so in the office. So it's a situation when Gina, or Mike, or Ned, or Andrea can't, you know, I, yes, I do have other clients, I'll admit to that. There is somebody from the firm always able to step in.
Other questions at the committee? To move to vote, those who are in favor of this contract? Those who are opposed to this contract? Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the 2024 school committee calendar revision. I am recommending approval for the revision to the 2024 school committee calendar, all-day referendum moved from April 2nd to April 9th. I have spoken with the town clerk in Richmond, because it's a presidential primary, it would need additional staff, they have different titles, they have to be different ballots, so in order to avoid any confusion, I am recommending that we move it to April 9th.
So moved, second.
Any questions? Are we going to have a regular meeting that evening?
We are, and Donna told me that you've done that in the past. That was a tradition, I guess. So we're bringing it back.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Some favor? To unanimous, thank you.
The next item is the assignment to subcommittees and school safety teams. This item was tabled at the last meeting. Vacancies are indicated in red. Changes can be made to any subcommittee, school safety teams, or school improvement teams.
It looks like we have, okay. So I'm going to start with Donna, then I'm going to go down this row. So Donna.
Okay, so I would like to be on the health and wellness subcommittee.
Okay.
I make a motion to appoint Donna to the health and wellness subcommittee.
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor? To unanimous, thank you. Tyler?
Yeah, I don't know the easy way to say this, but I'm, I'm asking off the audit subcommittee and the finance committee. With, with commitments that I have in other places of life, I cannot commit to that.
So it's just the audit and finance, you're staying on the budget?
I'm going to keep that. I think Andrew may throw me out a window if I do. I don't know.
Do we need to, we need to make a motion to remove you? I don't think so. So I saw who else's hand. Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to nominate Jessica Purcell on the health and wellness subcommittee.
Second.
Some favor?
And I also like to take my name off of it.
Your modus.
No, 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 I, no, I, I've been on it for a number of years, and I know these, Donna and Jessica has had some interest, so I thought they'd need all of us there.
In reference to that, I thought it was, it was kind of mandatory, or am I wrong?
Then you see, a minimum of one school can remember on the health and wellness. That one is required by law.
Or that person happens to be the chair of the...
Doesn't have to be the chair, but it has to be on the committee.
That's a good idea.
Right. They have to be on the committee, but, but typically, this committee person has chaired.
Now, just to let people know, as far as for the finance committee, it's one meeting. It's the meeting prior to the omnibus, so it's not a big lift.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, sorry. I just, oh.
We have to vote on this.
Which one?
The one you just did. Nominate Jessica.
Oh, we did, we did. We did. Yeah. So can we, we show of hands for Jessica?
For Jessica.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Donna. Just, just information.
Thank you. Andrew?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jessica Purcell to the policy subcommittee and the budget subcommittee. She has attended both meetings, have appreciated her input, and to the extent that she's willing, I'd like to see her on both committees.
Yeah, those are two that I'd like to... Two separate motions. So why don't we take budget subcommittee first?
So a motion to appoint Jess to the policy subcommittee.
Policy subcommittee, those in favor? No, second.
Second.
Oh, two second, that, the first one was, which one?
Policy subcommittee.
Yeah.
Sure. So this is for policy.
Policy subcommittee.
Who's in favor of adding Jess to the policy subcommittee?
I believe Polly wants to question.
Do you have a question? There's three Charlestown, a Richmond, and a Hopkinton, maybe one of the Charlestown people could step aside, kind of keep it balanced between all of the towns a little better? That was, that was my only comment. There's five people on there, so.
So I think every individual member has contributed greatly to the policy subcommittee. I've seen no division amongst towns. If anything, I find that that is one of the truly collaborative spaces of the work of this committee. That was certainly evident in our last committee meeting. I have no interest in asking Linda, myself, or Donna to vacate their roles. I think they've been wonderful contributors, as, as has Polly and as has Catherine, so I would not be comfortable with any of them, including myself, so I think that.
Okay. Few more discussion on Jessica's appointment to the policy subcommittee. Who's in favor? To unanimous, thank you.
Motion to approve, motion to appoint Jessica to the budget subcommittee.
Second.
Discussion. Who's in favor? To unanimous, thank you. Larry?
I'd like to take the vacancy of middle school safety team.
So moved.
Second. So, voting to add Larry to the vacant middle school safety team, who's in favor? To unanimous, thank you. It's like, any other movements that people would like to make?
Yes, well, since the audit subcommittee only had one person, Tyler, he just resigned. So we, and I don't know, I don't, I don't remember, I know Donna and I went through that, what the audit subcommittee did, but it's...
It's, it's, it's a very, I mean, you meet with the auditor and then...
Three or four meetings.
Okay, well, I just, I just wanted to point that out, that we're going to need some...
I will volunteer for the audit subcommittee.
I make a motion to appoint Catherine to the audit subcommittee.
Second.
Discussion. Who's in favor? Jesus, thank you.
Oh, Catherine.
Yeah, she's got to clarify the name. I will volunteer to meet. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll volunteer to join the policy subcommittee.
Make a motion to appoint Pat to the policy subcommittee.
Second. I'm getting...
Discussion. Who's in favor? Adding Pat to the policy subcommittee. So... That might be a quorum. So, John, if we have seven on the subcommittee, that's a quorum, isn't it?
I posted anyway.
It is.
So that is it? So six is the max? To not be...
I just figured it balanced out that...
Well, that would be...
I think, I mean, the policy, everything comes back to the school committee, so nothing can be done in policy because it has to come here.
So... You're welcome to come to. And anyway, yeah.
You can be, you can come to me.
Well, no.
No.
Right, because then you'd have a quorum again.
They could come as a member of the public, if they, you know, and not both.
And then get dicey.
Yeah, that's order. That's order.
Because it will be interpreted that you are there as a member of the committee.
So is there anyone who wants to remove themselves from the policy subcommittee so we don't skirt that? Yes. Linda, sir. I mean, someone else is going to have to take minutes, huh?
You're removing yourself?
Sure, because I have a...
This was your baby.
I know, but it's, I agree with Andrew, it's, it's going well. I mean, I don't, there's no, I don't understand why there needs to be any balance, but, you know, I, I don't want to, I don't want to labor the point. Go ahead, Andrew.
Wait. I'm not clear as to what the imbalance is. Again, this subcommittee seems to be...
I think, I think the point, just to clarify, are you saying, once you get on the school committee, even though you're elected by your town, you represent every student in Charahoe regardless of town? That's what the law says.
Thank you. There are other, there are other subcommittees that have imbalances, if you will. Again, this was Linda's proposal, she was a wonderful contributor to the committee, she also takes our minutes, I would prefer that she not leave. Again, nothing against Pat, I was fully prepared to support your nomination. With that said, this is working, I...
Donna? I don't want Linda to leave the policy.
So I need somebody to remove themselves, so I'm going to leave it?
No, you don't.
We, we voted on Patricia joining the committee.
You can. You can.
No, no, you don't need someone.
You're right. That is a point of order, thank you. Point of order, moving on. Okay. Linda? Jess?
School safety. I'd like to be on one. Donna Chambers is on two.
Oh.
So she's on Cala and Charlestown School.
You can add yourself to one if you'd like, unless, Donna, you want to give one up.
Say that again.
School safety team.
Safety team, sorry.
I'm fine, I'm fine.
But you're on two.
Okay, so Jess, would you like to add yourself to one?
I'd like to add myself to Cala.
Let me make a motion in a second.
All right, that's fine.
You can go to the high school, share.
Or that. I just thought...
No, it's getting far too confused, and we're getting very, yeah, so, Jess, where would you like to be?
I'd like to be at the high school or Richmond.
Pick one.
Richmond.
Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved. Second.
That was in favor.
Yeah.
So Mr. Daze is going to be very proud of the Richmond safety.
So Richmond instead of Cala, you're right?
Yes.
So wait a second, I'm very confused.
You're still where you are.
Forget what I said. You haven't done it.
Linda's taking Cala, who's taking Cala?
No, nobody. You. You're Cala, you're Charleston.
Okey dokey. Karen?
I'll put myself on the audit subcommittee.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Adding Linda, I'm sorry, Karen, to the audit subcommittee, all those in favor? unanimous, thank you. We're done with this part.
I do have one quick question. We're supposed to be discussing putting people on, can I just ask a quick question about procedure with the committees?
Sure.
We had, Ned, you just upgraded the recent, whatever amount of time, the food service contract? I just remember when, when Brian was in charge and... Sue, we, we still had a meeting just to review what was presented. Our group hasn't met, Catherine and I have not met in a long time. Okay. So going forward, you know, you want to, you want to meet at 2:30 on a, on whatever day, for us to just review, it's up to her, but we can at least come, right? Because, what was like, Kath, what was the last night?
I never went.
No, I know, we can, we can discuss meeting, just, I think Craig's point is, don't forget that we are there and available to you.
Linda, just want to make a comment, and I hope I'm not off agenda, but as far as the safety teams, the school safety teams, and I'm channeling Bill right now, so, Bill, if you're here, yes, so, we had reached an agreement that people on the school safety teams would do a minimum of three observations. So those of you who are new, and those of you who have two, remember that, you know, there's responsibility here, so you should, you should be on their email, if you're not, you know, we can probably make that work, so, just as a reminder.
Thank you. So the next person?
Yes, okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is the school committee's rules of conduct review. This item was requested by several members.
Anybody who wanted to see this discussed, I'm happy to open it up to a conversation if you have points to make about the code of conduct.
I have a general question. Code of conduct's not necessarily a policy, but should this be something that the policy subcommittee looks at first? Nope. Okay, all right.
This is statewide.
Well, that could, because all of you have to have, this is something to...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. But that's, I, you're Catherine, got, Catherine.
Only because you just brought it up, so where did this originate from? If you said it's not statewide, so I'm just caring, that's all, I shouldn't spoil.
So it is state law that you have to have bylaws and rules of conduct, so every committee has to have that. So this was created by a school committee, and the last time it was revised should be right at the bottom of your sheet.
2015. Was adopted in 1995.
And then those are the revision dates. But it's been, oh, it's always us, the school committee, this is specific to just school committee members, so it doesn't pertain to employees of the school district, other than how, like, we run, like, when you request information from the super judge.
So just to, I guess, clarification, if we were to amend it, I'm just thinking about, we would have a subcommittee that would, we just, no, we would do it as a group?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Like a workshop.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was kind of more to my, my point, like, so I do...
The other option is you could create another committee.
So, Chair, and this may be personal preference of yours, since you, since you ascended to the position, but there is a, so, agenda development, right? That's section two, I think. You, you've asked in the past that we send you an email for agenda items. Do you want them requested in a meeting and sent in an email?
I would.
So I do, because it says "or" in the policy.
So I would, so I can keep track of it, and I have dates on it, too. It's helpful to me if you do both. So you're not required to do both, but I find it's helpful in agenda development for you to do both.
So should we, should we change that statement to... So, should we, should we change that statement to "and" instead of "or"?
I don't know that I want to tie the hands of a future Chair.
Well, I wanna make sure when people request something during a meeting, it gets to an Agenda.
So I guess I, rather than changing the policy, what I would say, as I'm Chair now, is if somebody has an aversion to sending me an email, then just let me know that they have an aversion to sending me an email, it is so I can keep a record of it.
Okay.
It does also help Donna to make sure, there has been some times where, you know, and Donna's excellent, when people will say that she didn't capture the motion correctly, or, I mean, we've asked once, the comma was in the wrong place, so it helps us to specifically know, for Donna's, when she does the Agenda Development, exactly what you're looking for, so that she is clear, so that, because she does, she works very hard, and I don't like to see her upset.
And Andrew?
Yeah, no, I'm, that's, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that we're treating things consistently.
Other comments?
Can I add to that, though? There are times when there are specific things that are yearly on the Agenda.
Oh, absolutely.
So someone may, it may take a few Agendas to get to what you requested, but it's only because there are certain requirements that you have to do in a timely manner, so sometimes the request can't be right away, I apologize, but-
And, and, and maybe, maybe, in, in, in all fairness, in light of, you know, open communication, that, that should be communicated back to folks. I know, Catherine, you and I, we talked about something the other day, and I said, yeah, not right now, we'll get there.
Yeah.
So if, if it's going to be a week, or, or, a meeting or two before it might see the light of day on Agenda, whoever requested it, it might just be nice to let them know that.
So, and I do try to do that.
Okay. Like I said, I, I, I haven't run into it at this point, but-
All right, it's all good points.
Yeah.
I think I had requested this way back in March or something, to, that we could review it, because of, specifically, two Agenda Developments. See where requests for legal opinions or other information from legal counsel shall be made during School Committee requests for future, future Agenda items or legal opinions. A majority vote of the School Committee is required, a request may be sought during executive session, a majority vote of the School Committee is required. And that was the issue we had when Mr. Anderson submitted the opinion to, that's the issue I had, I was reading that, we onboard, we're giving all these documents, and nowhere in these documents does it say, Mr. Anderson can work outside of the School Committee. In fact, that's just what I'm reading here, black and white, so I know, I've been told differently, and he handles school affairs, but how do you expect the School Committee to know that with the documents you provide them onboarding? So maybe, if we have a little workshop and we go through this again, that should be a very big topic of conversation.
Gina, you had a response in there.
I just wanted to clarify, just to clarify, this is for the School Committee, so in order for, so, just very similar to, so, what if you can't email me and say, Susan, I need you to do this, you don't operate individually, you operate as a body, so you need a majority vote, so that's what everybody gives me as an example. So if Andrew wants me to write a letter to the Governor and ride, then he has to come here and say, is that where the Committee wants me to put my time and effort? If the Committee wants John's legal advice about, I wanna know, you know, how much legal counsel's across the state in, in comparison, whatever, the majority of the School Committee has to say for that legal opinion. So what happened was, and I'm gonna be very honest, and when there is a situation that I know you're talking about, was that there was an individual that, where I was told by the town clerk in Richmond, that the person, Jessica, was going to be appointed, and then she was, they gave me a date for that appointment. Then I received word that there was a change, the town council was now appointing somebody else. Donna had reached, I wasn't even in the office, she had reached out, because we have a responsibility, myself and Donna, to the district, to ensure that we don't put the district in a liability situation. So the question, it was, what happens if anyone allows an individual to sit that's not legal in that, in that representation? That's not about all of you, that was about the district liability. So, we, my understanding is Catherine and Donna both talked with John to make sure, because I, I happen to be out of the office at a school, and that's why that happened, because that's not his legal opinion from the School Committee, that's the district saying, every vote we take, what's, what could happen if you sit in on a homeschool request, and you're not legally supposed to be there? What could the district say, can the parents sue us? So, that's, if you want John to do something, that's, this is for, if the district has advice from John, we do that all day long, I mean, that's, I ha, I do that all day long, because there's lots of opportunities to see that. You, you heard a public member three times talk about the lawsuit, so these conversations happen time and-
Donna's pregnant with comment.
No, I, this Agenda is not John's Agenda, so if you're reading School Committee requests for legal opinions, this is your request for a legal opinion, what's on here has nothing to do with John making a legal-
Right, and you're saying that's because I'm John's effort tipping.
This Agenda has nothing to do with John.
Well, I think the wires got crossed, because Catherine had stepped forward, and you had said that you had requested John, this is just going back so far, and, and to explain why this is on the Agenda for tonight. That, that was, you know, me and a couple other people, I think.
John's responsibility-
Yeah.
-to keep the district out of trouble, but he, he doesn't have to come to the Committee to request, can I do this? That's not his job to request before the Committee, can I move forward? He's, he's, his job is to keep us out of trouble.
It's if the Committee has a specific legal opinion, they want John to respond.
Actually, I think the Superintendent and Donna articulated anything that I would articulate, so I'd like, so.
Craig?
Yes, I'm kinda glad someone puts this on the Agenda, because it, it basically says Rules of Conduct, but part of that in Section Four is something called Ethics. And all members of the School Committee are bound by the Code of Basic Management Principles and Ethical Standards for School Committee Members. So, let's go to that. Code of Basic Management Principles and Ethical Standards for School Committee Members. Number 11, Act, only through public meetings, since individual board members have no authority to bind the board. Number 15, render all decisions based on available facts and by informed, independent judgment, other than by the influences of individuals or special interest groups. I think some of the School Committee members have come pretty darn close to breaking these, and I would hope that we all review these again, and see how we could start treading in the right direction. You shouldn't be representing families dur, during public forum, or appearing to represent families during public forum, when they look at members looking for guidance. You know, you can't act on behalf of the whole Committee. Thank you very much, Chair.
I, so I, I'm sorry, it's Catherine, and then Donna, and Polly.
Okay, so, I think that, yes, there was a misunderstanding, and I think that we articulated a lot very well. My only, the only thing I'd like to reiterate is, yes, certainly, we are a School Committee, and it's always a majority vote, and no one has any individual authority, it's collectively, I understand that. So that includes the Chair as well, right, any legal advice is the Administration's seat, is that right? No.
So.
So what I'm saying-
I don't know how to clarify it better, so, when we go back to January, as the Superintendent pointed out, we had been told someone would be appointed, very quickly thereafter, I got an email saying that person was not going to be appointed, and that email was sent to John by Donna to say, hmm, this seems odd, and John offered a legal opinion. That's John's duty, so whether I had a conversation with John, did not have a conversation with John, had any interaction with John, that's John's job, to offer a legal opinion. I know at the time, there were some members who didn't want John to offer anything, but in fact, it would have been a dereliction of John's duty to not offer that opinion. Further, it would be a dereliction of my duty as Chair to have information from our legal counsel, that we were about to trip into a pothole, and just keep that super secret unto myself. So, I stand by the decision that was made, John offered an opinion.
Just to add, Donna is the district clerk, and you all get her appointment coming next month, because she's gonna stay, I'm gonna have to drag her in. But, so Donna as district clerk, she has to make, she had to call John to make sure that she can't give an executive session packet to someone who's not legally supposed to have it. So she puts herself at risk and at liability to the district if she hands over that packet, so that was the original reason why Donna needed to know, you know, and, and I, listen, Donna doesn't need my permission to reach out to John, because she is a very well-suited for her position, and I have the utmost faith in how she handles herself, and she's right, if she had given that packet to the wrong individual, that's a loss for, or any parent whose child's information was in that packet, or any employee, the union would have, could have a case, so Donna has a responsibility, just like I do, to make sure that we don't put the district in a situation that could, could be concerned.
Just do a transition point.
It isn't really so much a point, it's, I just wanna clarify, I just wanna completely understand something, but I think what you maybe misunderstood is, or maybe didn't communicate it quite right, is what you did is you received a legal opinion, you didn't seek one, and so, yes, you had every right to receive it, because you were giving it. So what I'm just, was trying to clarify, is that, yes, the School Committee acts as a body, no one member, including the Chair, can seek our legal opinion, however, you were able to receive it, correct?
I was seeking it.
No, no, no.
Just me.
Yeah, Catherine.
Right.
Yes, okay, that's fine, and, yeah.
Okay.
It's fun, it's me clear.
I have seen other hands, so Donna and Polly had hands up, and Craig had a hand up.
So, to Craig's point, to Craig's point about the ethics and paying particular attention to this, and I'm glad this was on the Agenda. I probably am one of the people that has suggested that we need to review this. I also want to point out, Roman numeral three, under Communication Request, A, outside of the meeting setting, School Committee members should speak only for themselves, they should avoid giving the impression that they speak for the School Committee. Not just speak, but send letters to the editor and things like that, and that has been, I believe, violated, so be very careful of that, thank you.
Craig? Oh.
I, I, there was an ethics review of School Committee members representing their constituents, and I can get you a copy of that, and that's exactly what we're empowered to do. When a constituent, or a parent, a taxpayer, anybody in Hopkinton contacts me and says, hey, I have an issue going on at the school, this is what it is, there's already been an ethics filing for that, and I have the response, and it's exactly in line with the response, so there's your answer, I'll send it right to you, Craig, so you can take a look at that. Second of all, I'm glad, Donna, that you brought up the School Committee members speaking for the entire School Committee, and I'm sorry, Catherine, but you went on Dan York's show, and your comment was, on January 24th, you spoke to Dan York, six minutes in, you said, and I quote, "He filed the injunction in the Supreme Court, that's where it had to go, because we are looking to remove someone from an office." So, you made the audience aware that you were Chair of the School Committee, and you spoke about the School Committee as a week, and I'm not nitpicking, I'm just saying-
And you are.
And that's fine, that's fine, point and border, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have you finish your thought.
I didn't bring it up at the time, you were a new Chair and stuff, but I thought it pertained to this, maybe we could all use a little more caution around how we speak, especially on statewide radio talk shows.
John?
Yeah, I just wanna clarify, first of all, I appreciate very much if you'd send that Ethics Commission opinion to me as well.
I will.
Because, frankly, it doesn't reflect, it may reflect what the Ethics Code says, but it does not reflect your duty as a member of the School Committee, because there are certain matters that the public has a right to bring to the School Committee. For example, you may have a complaint about a school administrator that you want fi, that a constituent wants fired. That school administrator has various contractual and procedural rights to a fair hearing, and if you are acting as an advocate for that parent, you can't give a fair hearing to the employee. And as a School Committee member, you need to remember that you are the last stop on the train here in Charahoe, when somebody has a complaint about one of our employees, about another student, and you have, if you come in as an advocate, you're not in a position to give that employee or student due process, and our Constitution requires that.
Along those lines, you know, my general rule of thumb that has worked for me in my eight years on the School Committee is, you understand where the person is at in terms of basic chain of command, and refer them to their next logical step. You may, I may give them a brief overview of, here are the, you know, as the Superintendent has said, if you are not happy with the building, you know, often it may be, and start with the classroom educator. If, if you aren't satisfied with the classroom educator, then, you know, the building principal, if not the building principal, then the superintendent, and then, yes, absolutely, if you are not happy or in agreement with the Superintendent's decision, you have every right to come to the School Committee, and for that matter, I typically let constituents know that actually, School Committee is not the end of the road either. You have also every right to go to the Rhode Island Department of Education after the School Committee has ruled, and/or other legal remedies, so, you know, I have found that letting folks know what that chain of command is, and pointing them into that next step, and making sure that they understand what it is, has been most helpful, so that we can, of course, be responsive to our constituents. I absolutely agree with Polly that we have a responsibility to be responsive to our constituents, we also need to ensure, as John said, that we are affording due process, so we should direct individuals to the appropriate place.
Other comments from the Committee?
I did have my hand up, but I'm gonna reiterate what Andrew just said.
Sorry.
We do have an appeals policy here. We should at least abide to it, that's all I'm gonna add.
I'm sorry, that, that's all.
So, Brian, if you'd like to make a comment?
So good to see you.
Hey, you're funny, it's good to see you. Ryan Kelly, a Richmond resident, one thing I would ask, your Code of Conduct actually has a section in here on voting, right? And they say abstention should be only used if you have conflict of interest, if you're ignorant of the topic in some way, and you can't make a decision. And the third one is if that's like meeting minutes and you weren't at the meeting. The public put you here to lead us, right? And you can't lead if you're silent, and then abstention just means that you're being silent, so I encourage all of you to establish a yes/no position, and, and vote your conscience. Thank you.
Further comments from the School Committee on this issue?
There's just been some general things thrown out, and seriously, I don't follow what some of the people are alluding to, I don't know if there'd be any interest on the Committee of having like a workshop, because I think people are trying to be maybe polite to an extent, and they're alluding to things but not wanting to be specific, and I just think that is-